Good evening, I'd like to call the August 15th Board of Commissioners into order. At this time, I'd like to call on Pastor Tony Smith with Millersburg Baptist Church. Pastor Smith, if you would please come forward. We had Steve Irwin, we didn't have a pastor for tonight, but Pastor Smith has showed up. He was Vicki Taylor's pastor, so I asked him to step in and pray and open our commission, and we'd be honored to have you. After the prayer, I'll ask Commissioner Irwin to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States flag and to the pledge to the Tennessee state flag. This time, Pastor Smith, you are recognized.
Dear heavenly Father, God, we humbly bow before you this evening, God, first and foremost, Lord, to thank you, Lord, for all your blessings, Lord, you've blessed this country with, and, Lord, I thank you for each and every man and woman that's here tonight, Lord, to do business for this county, and, Lord, I ask you your hand of grace, mercy, and guidance in this meeting, Lord, and I pray that everything that's done here tonight would bring you honor and glory. And, Lord, again, I thank you for each and every one that's come out tonight, and, Lord, thank you most of all for your son, Jesus Christ. Lord, we ask you guidance, in Jesus Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Three white stars on field blue, act on even strong and never true, because it's pride and love that we salute the flag of Tennessee. May be seated. We'll call Madam Secretary. We have a quorum, and we're prepared to take up our business tonight. At this point in time, I'd like to call on Chairman Pro Tem Jeff Phillips for approval of the minutes, and I do believe, Chairman Pro Tem, we have two sets of minutes. Without objection, we'll take both of those minutes in one motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two sets of minutes to approve, one for our June 13th and one for our June 26th meeting. I've reviewed those minutes, I find them to be in order, and move that we dispense with the reading and that they be adopted.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Were any of the votes changed on these minutes?
Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, you're recognized.
No, no votes were changed.
So on page 1145, when we voted on the tax levy, no votes were changed from what was on the board to what showed up on the paper?
They shouldn't have been.
Not to my knowledge, Mr. Stevens. If there is a question, I'll be happy to revise them, but at the moment, I don't have them in front of me.
Well, I thought that two of the people who voted yes voted no, and one who voted no voted yes on the board.
Very well, if that's the case, I'll look back at that myself and bring that forward.
I know after the fact that there was a correction that was made, but...
That's right, you're exactly right, and if, as I said, I don't have them in front of me, but if there were changes to be made, I will bring them, I'll bring up my hard copy minutes, make sure that this body is aware of it, and if there were corrections to be made, I'll bring them back before the body.
Okay, thank you.
Other discussion or questions? Seeing none, members are voting on two sets of minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. At this point in time, I'd like to call on Chairman Pro Tem Jeff Phillips to read our resolution of sympathy for Mrs. Vicki Taylor. Charles, would you like to come up with your pastor? Please come up and join us, and the family, if any families here.
While Ms. Vicki's family's coming up, I'd like to invite all of our commissioners to come up and stand with us, too. And I believe there is at least one former commissioner that's in the audience, and I'd like to invite him up, because I know he served many years with Ms. Vicki, so Gary, if you would come up, and if there's anyone out there that I've over-missed, a former commissioner, if you would also please come up. This might seem a little unorthodoxed, but the reason we're doing this tonight is because Ms. Vicki touched all of our lives. Some of us have been here a lot longer than we would really like to admit, but I can't remember a time in the number of years that I've been here that Ms. Vicki ever questioned an assignment that was she was given. And not only did she do that assignment and do it professionally, but she also did it in a very timely manner and got us the information that we needed when we need it. She's going to be greatly missed. Charles, you have our deepest sympathy. Resolution of sympathy, whereas it is with great sadness that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners learned of the death of Ms. Vicki Helene Taylor, and whereas Vicki began her career with Rutherford County on November 22nd, 1983, and served for 36 years, first working for the county attorney, and thereafter working as executive assistant for four county mayors, John Mankin, Nancy Allen, Ernest Burgess, and Bill Kethron. I believe she even worked for county executive instead of the county mayor at one time. Whereas Ms. Vicki had a warm smile and a kind heart that greeted everyone equally to the county mayor's office without regard to their social standing or station in life, and whereas Vicki was a wealth of knowledge about Rutherford County that many other employees depended on and sought out. And whereas Vicki is survived by her loving husband of 35 years, Charles, daughter Kimberly, son-in-law Eric, grandchildren Leila and Zalyn, sisters Brenda, Linda, and Terry, nieces Tanya, Tiffany, Tabitha, and Shawna, and great nieces and nephews, and whereas Vicki was proud of her daughter Kimberly, but oh, those grandbabies, Laylin and Jaslin, there are none others like them, she always said. Whereas Vicki was a faithful and devoted member of Millersburg Baptist Church and lived her faith daily, and whereas we know that her passing has caused great sadness to her family and friends, now therefore it be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners at its regular session on this 15th day of August 2019, to hereby extend sincere sympathy to the family of Vicki Taylor. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of sympathy be forwarded to the family of Vicki Taylor by the clerk of this legislative valley. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve.
I have a motion for approval. Seconds from all current and former county commissioners. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Charles, we thank you so much for coming tonight. We're gonna miss Vicki every day.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you. Pastor Smith, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Next, members, we have Mr. Jeff Elliott from the Tennessee Fire Academy will give a presentation. Mr. Elliott, you'll please come forward, and you're recognized. Accompanied by two Mr. Farleys.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Rutherford County Commissioners. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here. I'm Jeff Elliott, I'm the Director of the Fire Program with the Tennessee Fire and Codes Academy. Each year, as we close out our fiscal year, we recognize fire departments that have exceeded 1,000 or more contact hours training with us. Put that in perspective, this year, there's always approximately 700 fire departments that are recognized across the state, and this year, exactly 70 fire departments exceeded 1,000 or more contact hours, so roughly 10% trained at that level. I'm very happy to be here tonight and really recognize the accomplishments of the Rutherford County Fire and Rescue Departments. Not only did they achieve 3,157 hours, but they also have the honor of getting the award for being the combination department in the state with the most training hours. So I'm very proud of what they've accomplished and their commitment to excellence. Chief Farley, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I want to accept this on behalf of all my men and women at Rutherford County Fire Rescue who spend countless hours training each and every year. We have come so far since we created the combination department as far as training. I believe that our department can handle any hazard or anything that we come upon. We've tried to become an all-hazardous fire department, and I believe we've reached that milestone, and I can't say enough about my people who I'm proud to serve and lead. I had two guys graduate from Perry, Mexico this week because they want to be able to provide a higher level of patient care with their patients, and I have three more people about to start that same class, they're paying for that out of their own pocket because they're dedicated to this county and they love this county, and they want to do the very best they can for them. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention our county mayor and the commission, who y'all have funded our fire department and blessed us very graciously and done so much for us that we wouldn't, this would not be possible if it wasn't for your support, and I thank you very much for that.
It's a home day for me tonight, I appreciate it, but I wanted to be here tonight, I'm Gary Farley, for some of you who don't know me, I'm the actual Assistant Commissioner of Fire for the State of Tennessee, I oversee the State Fire Marshal's Office and the Academy. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to recognize the Rutherford County Fire and Rescue. Not only are they a partner in our training division with the Academy, they're also a partner in our Close the Door program and our Get to Learn Tennessee program that are saving lives across the state of Tennessee. So I wanted to let you all know some of the other things they're doing here, and I want to let you know I appreciate it very much, and thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Farley. Thank you, Mr. Elliott, and congratulations, Chief Farley. At this point in time, I'd like to, let me back up on the agenda, members, we had under item G, Mr. Bill Kraus, Executive Director of HARC. He had called at the last minute, we didn't have time to reprint the agenda, but he had called at the last minute and canceled, so it's not that we skipped him. At this point in time, I'd like to introduce Bella and her handler, Adam Trynann from the Rutherford County Correctional Workhouse. Sergeant, if you would, bring Bella up, and for all the people looking at, watching at home today, this is kind of a feel-good story, and I wanted to share this with the commission, Bella's story, and it's a short story, if you'll indulge me just briefly, but for those on budget, if you remember, for those on budget committee, we were, I was trying to get a drug sniffing and a cellphone sniffing dog, because we'd used them when I was in the state senate at T-Dog for our state prisons. And, of course, we got down when Director Cope brought his budget in and had buying, purchasing a dog, and we got down to the needs versus the wants, so we cut out the wants and the dog was there, okay? So she got cut, or he. But the very next day, it was kind of ironic, because Michael, our director at PAWS, a dog walked in from its handler, who was a retired THP officer with the dog that retired with him. And he was taking a job as a truck driver, and evidently, the company that he worked for would not allow the dog to travel with him, so he came to turn the dog in at PAWS as a rescue, and it was Bella. Bella's eight, nine years old, Sergeant, seven years old, so she's kind of getting towards the end, but, you know, when Michael called Director Cope and said, "We've got a dog, trained dog, believe it or not," and so Bill calls me, he says, "Can we accept this dog?" And I said, "Well, we already have a veterinarian, we're already getting some free food from ours that might be able to help defray some of those costs." And I said, "Absolutely." And so Director Cope brought her in, and she came over, and they were having a staff meeting, and Sergeant here, Sergeant Trynann stuck his hand up, and he said, "We'll take her. Our family dog just passed away just a few short days prior, and our family is still suffering from that, and we'll take her home." And that has been done, and I did have to sign a purchase order just last week because she wanted to go to Publix, and she tore up her kennel and Bennett trying to get in the car to go to Publix with the family, because she's really taken up with the family. But, you know, the thing I want to stress here is that inner workings between two agencies in our government and what's going on, because one called the other, that's all in need, and here we've given an animal a second opportunity. And I heard just last week at the board meeting that you've got her now trained, so she destroyed the myth of you can't teach old dog new tricks.
She was amazingly good.
So smart, but you've taught her how to sniff out tobacco.
Yes, sir.
And so every time she comes walking down the hall at the Correctional Work Center, Commissioner Gammon, I'm sure if she barks, you start hearing the commotes flushing, right? Because everybody's getting rid of whatever tobacco or cigarette buzz they picked up. So, you know, I think it's a feel-good story for our county, for our departments working together, and for you and your family, and especially for Bella. I understand that she is so smart that a lot of the secretaries, Director Cope brings some treats, and she knows what time to go into their office, and she opens a drawer, she opens a drawer by her with her paw and just waits for the treat to be given to her. So she's a smart little cookie. But we just wanted to introduce Bella and show the good things that are happening with our departments. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I should have warned everybody to empty your pockets before you came in tonight, before she hit on you, okay? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, and Bella. Next on the agenda, we have public comments. We have none. Next on the agenda is elections and confirmations, and I'll call on Steering Vice Chairman, Commissioner Craig Harris.
Commissioners, you'll find a list of notaries on your iPad. I move for their approval.
I have a motion and a second on our notaries. Any discussion? Comments? Seeing none. Everybody signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
We need to fill two vacancies for the Industrial Development Board, Health and Education Facilities Board. The Steering Committee recommends Russell Warren and William Jones, and I move for their approval.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Steering Committee would like to announce Lee Bogle and Craig Lynch to the Planning Commission. I move for their approval.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Steering Committee would like to announce the appointment of Carmen Arnold, Maggie Seacrest, Lisa Brewer, Laura Lowe, Scott Anderson, Janine Rabidoo, to the Judicial Commissioners for Smyrna General Sessions Courts. I move for their approval.
I have a motion for acceptance and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Steering Committee would also like to make two announcements for election of Chairman Pro Tem and Chaplain for our September meeting.
Next on the agenda is the tentative election of the commission chair. This time, I'd like to turn the gavel over to Chairman Pro Tem for commission chair.
Thank you, Mayor Kethron. At this time, we need to tentatively elect commission chairman, and the floor is open for nominations.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Chairman Bill Kethron.
We have a motion, the nomination cease, and a second. All of us in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All of us in favor of the original motion to elect Mayor Kethron by acclamation, please say aye.
Mr. Chairman, I was gonna ask for a recorded vote on that when I didn't get up in time.
I can ask for a recorded vote, so let it be. First, we'll, is it okay if we forego the voting on the unanimous election and just vote for, at this time, please cast your vote, and we have one nomination, and that's I'm not sure whether they need to do it by voice, but since there's only one, can we just do it electronically? Can we do that? We don't have to do it by voice, correct?
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Shall I record the votes? Mr. Chairman Pro Tem. Eighteen yes, one no, one abstain. Motion passes.
Thank you. Just go ahead and announce that this will have to be confirmed at our September meeting, and I'll turn the chairmanship back over to Mayor Kethron.
Thank you, Speaker Pro Tem, and I want to thank each and every one of you for your vote of confidence, I certainly appreciate that, and I promise to work hard for you this next 12 months and the citizens of this community, and I promise not to let you down. Thank you. Next, we have election of Steering Committee. The floor is now open for nominations for Steering Committee. Commissioner Phillips.
I'd like to nominate Craig Harris.
Have Craig Harris, who's been nominated.
I'd like to nominate Steve Irwin.
Commissioner Johnson. Steve Irwin. Commissioner Rather.
I don't like change, so I nominate Robert Stevens.
Stevens, Commissioner Stevens. Commissioner Garland.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Pettis Reed.
Commissioner Allen.
I'd like to nominate Mike Kush.
Another nomination?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Alan McAdoo.
Alan McAdoo.
I nominate Michael Rather.
Mr. Chairman, I move that nominations cease and these seven be elected by acclamation.
I have a motion and a second, that these seven be elected by acclamation, and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries, all seven, congratulations. At this point in time, we will stand in recess, and the Steering Committee will exit into room 205, and we will await your return. Ladies and gentlemen, the vote has been sent, Commissioner Craig Harris is the new chairman, and Commissioner Pettis Reed is the vice chairman. Congratulations to both of you, and I look forward to working with all of you on the Steering Committee and the rest of the committee as well. Next on the agenda, members, is item H. Resolution to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've also reviewed the items on the consent agenda, find them all to be appropriate, and move that the consent agenda be passed and adopted.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Without objection, we're on to board, members. If you would, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Ladies and gentlemen, now it's time for our public hearing. We will suspend the rules, move to suspend the rules without objection, and move into our public hearings.
Thank you, Mayor Kethron, and good evening, Mayor, and members of the commission. We have one rezoning hearing for you tonight, it's item 19-A-012, Mr. Halif Haji. This is for property located at 9079 Shelbyville Pike. The property is zoned residential low density, he is asking for commercial general, and the size of the property is about 1.3 acres. The applicant's proposing to zone the property again to commercial general in order to use the property as a used car sales lot. Motor vehicle sales are classified as vehicular craft and related equipment sales in the zoning ordinance, and commercial general is the first zone, I guess you would say, the least restrictive of the zone that would allow this use. The applicant has submitted a concept plan, which is on your iPads. The concept plan does show a parking and display area in the front of the property. The existing house would be renovated into an office, with the existing garage being upgraded for use as a repair and detailing area. There's also a smaller storage structure on the property that would be removed. Access to this property would continue to be and is currently along Shelbyville Pike. Any new or modified access points to Shelbyville Pike would have to be reviewed by T-Dog since that is a state road. Verification of these requirements, as well as landscape screening and anything else, would have to be verified through a site plan submitted to our office, so we just can't start operating the next day. You would have to go ahead and submit a site plan, engineered plan, to our office. Commercial general properties are required to install a type-two buffer adjacent to residentially zoned property. zoned property, property along the north of the subject property zone light industrial, so they wouldn't require any buffering on that side. But again, a landscape plan would be part of the site plan submittal that we would expect to see, and the site would also be subject to the performance standards in our zoning ordinance that deal with noise, dust, odors, and those type of issues. The commission, the Planning Commission, had some questions about the number of employees, existing non-residential zoning in the area, and potentially sharing access to the property with that light industrially zoned property to the north. Again, that's something that we would have to kind of flesh out during the site plan review stage. Following discussion, the Planning Commission did recommend approval by a vote of 10 for and one against, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions from the Commissioners? Hearing none, then I would call the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners meeting in the recess to hold a public hearing on this request. The public hearing is now in session. Anyone desiring to speak for or against the issue, if you would, please come forward, state your name, address, whether or not you are for or against the proposed request. Seeing no one coming forward, I declare the public hearing closed. The Rutherford County Board of Commissioners will call back into session. Do I have a motion? Have a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any questions or discussion? Without objection, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Demossi. I believe that we had no one, no business. So we will move into reports by standing committees. Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee. Our chairman is out today, so our vice chairman will be reporting to you. You're recognized, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow Commissioners. Budget and Finance Committee has three resolutions for your consideration this evening. The first one is a general fund amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. Health Department, increase other salaries and wages $4,000, decrease unassigned with benefits, decrease unassigned fund balance $4,745. This is merely a budget cleanup. We have two fire grants, one for personal protective equipment and for fire prevention, and these would include the matching funds that Rutherford County would be responsible for. Decrease unassigned fund ballots $11,186, increase revenue $111,862, and an increase our expenditures $123,048 for the fire prevention, which is smoke detectors, I believe, for the low-income families. Decrease unassigned fund balance $4,077, increase revenue $81,537, and increase expenditures $85,614, resolved this 15th day of August 2019. I so move, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, we're on the board, members.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Our next resolution is a budget amendment for the solid waste department for Crest Stone, and this is for the Leanna Convenience Center. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the solid waste fund be amended as follows. Convenience Center, increase expenditures for site development $200,000, and decrease assigned for a public health and welfare $200,000. Resolved this, the 15th day of August 2019. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Questions? Seeing none, you're on the board. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The third resolution, some of us may recall back in September 2001, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners passed a resolution requiring that we purchase our copy machines and no leasing. After technology changes, the mayor is recommending us to give him or the purchasing the power to either lease or option, to lease or to purchase based on the financial situation. So whereas in September 2001, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners approved a resolution requiring all departments to purchase copy machines instead of leasing copy machines to provide a greater cash savings, and whereas technology has changed in the structure of copiers, leases have changed since the resolution was approved, and whereas the acquisition of a copy machine needs to be analyzed separately for each transaction to determine the methods that generates the lease cash outlay, therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the resolution approved on the 13th day of September 2001, requiring departments to purchase copy machines instead of leasing copy machines be repealed, and this resolved this the 15th day of August 2019. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion?
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Chairman Allen, no report. Health and Education.
First thing on the agenda is a resolution to lease old store at Rockvale to the Rockvale Historical Society for 50 years for $1 per year, requiring 1 million liability insurance with relative county name as an additional insured. And I had read this before, and we turned it over to our county attorney to go over it, and it's been a couple of months, and I think one of the issues was the land that the old store set on, owned, would relative county be liable on that. So I'm going to turn it over to the county attorney since he reviewed it.
We did look at that. There's, as many of you know, a history with the property and the old Rockvale store, and one of the contingencies that the society has agreed to, in addition to maintaining its upkeep and use, and I believe they're planning to restore it, is to make sure that it never leaves that parcel and where it currently sits. So there are two agreements that you will be approving tonight. One is a donation agreement where we are donating the building to the society on the contingency that it will not ever be removed, and that if they stop as a going concern in their nonprofit capacity, it will revert back to the county. And then the second agreement is a lease agreement for the land immediately underneath the building that has the same stipulations in it, in addition to indemnity provisions and insurance requirements.
Commissioner Rather.
I'd like to clarify, because it says on here that the resolution is to lease the store, but I understood Mr. Christians said to say we're leasing the land and donating the store.
I'm happy to clarify that. The agenda item as written here, I do not believe accurately reflects what the resolution wording is. I reviewed the resolution, and it is to donate the store and lease the land under it. So good catch, but I just don't think it made it to the agenda.
Any more questions? Commissioner Stevens.
Is the store affixed to the real estate, or is it movable?
Well, I have not been out there personally. I imagine that if you had enough digging equipment and you put it on the back of a truck, it could be moved.
Well, my understanding of real estate is once you affix a building to the property, it becomes part of the real estate, unless it's something that's movable, like a mobile home, or a shed, or something like that. So I don't know if we can do this. If it's anchored down and part of the land, now it's part of the real estate.
Do what? I'm sorry.
If the building has got a foundation and it's part of the land now, it's part of the real estate. It's not personal property that can be moved or just give the building to them. The building's part of the real estate now.
So this resulted from, I believe, the commission meeting that it was held in March of sometime, and the commission's vote at that time was to donate the building. And so our office attempted to create agreements that would memorialize that sort of arrangement that would account for the building itself being donated, but having reversionary language in it to where if they stopped as a going concern or not using it for their stated nonprofit purpose, it would revert back, and also having the condition that they would never move it in case they were able to do so. In addition to that, to account for, I think, the issue that you're raising here is a separate lease agreement for the land that's underneath it.
Well, the building is part of the land that's underneath it. That's what I'm trying to understand, unless it's something that's not anchored down.
I'm happy to, we can defer this, and I can get back with this.
I'm ready for the issue to go away, because we've been dealing with this every month for six months, but...
Our office feels comfortable with the agreements that we've reached, that it would account for either scenario. I think it's a tough scenario, because you have a very old building, and if it burns down, or if somebody comes and tries to lift it up with a truck and put it on the back of an 18-wheeler and haul it off, that's what we were wanting to try and prevent. My understanding, based on the history of this, is that there was litigation involved years ago regarding this piece of property, and one of the contingencies as it relates to Rutherford County is that we cannot allow that building to move. And so from liability perspective and making sure that we're complying with that settlement agreement that we reached, that was the framework in mind with the two agreements that were drafted.
Commissioner Pettis.
Commissioner, the building is, with any building that was built, lacking 1884, am I correct? It sets on pillars, sets on rock pillars, is what it sets on. I believe this agreement and resolution right here has met the understanding of both the Rockvale Historical Society's attorney, and has met our agreement of our attorney, so both parties have agreed upon this. So I think this is understanding. We've been with this for three years now, and, you know, there's time, about time to move on, I think. If it be proper, can I make this motion, just say I approve of this and approve this motion?
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second? Discussion? I got a second. Any further discussion or questions? Let's be on the board on this one, if you would.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Next on the agenda, the lease with Town of Smyrna, 18 acres behind Clerk's Building, located at 205, I assume that's Lowry Street. This says L. Is that Lowry?
Weakley.
Weakley. Weakley Street, Smyrna, Tennessee, 37167. And I have a resolution, and I will read the resolution pertaining to this piece of property. Whereas the attached lease agreement between relative county and the Town of Smyrna for leasing of certain real property owned by relative county, consisting of approximately 18 acres located behind the relative county Clerk's office in Smyrna, Tennessee, for use by the Town of Smyrna, Parks and Recreation Department for recreational purposes, specifically practice fields, a copy of said lease agreement being attached heretofore as exhibit one as and incorporated herein at length, as is set forth verbatim, is in the best interest of the citizens of relative county. Now therefore be it resolved by the relative county Board of Commissioners that the appropriate officials for and on behalf of relative county be and hereby are authorized to enter into and execute for and on behalf of relative county the lease agreement with the Town of Smyrna as presented, resolved this 15th day of August 2019, and I so move.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? Commissioner Gammann.
I was in the meeting, but I just wanted to verify, they're going to carry some type of insurance also.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It was with the county attorney approval, and the insurance was a portion of it, and I don't know if the county attorney has reviewed.
Give me one second, I can pull it real quick. I did look at this, and I believe there's a copy attached to it. There is insurance requirements that they have to maintain and show proof to us upon request. I believe it's a million dollars that can be either through commercial liability insurance or self-insured. I don't know if they are, but per occurrence, so that is in there.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, we're on the board. If you would, please cast your vote, members.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Did I say change?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's my fault.
I thought it was quick.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
That concludes your report. Thank you, Commissioner McAdoo. Chairman Reed, no report from Public Safety tonight. Chairman Kush, no report from Public Works. Steering Legislative Governmental Committee. Establishment of a Select Infrastructure Committee. Chairman Harris. If you would like to yield to Chairman Kush, that was brought to the Steering Committee.
Yes, I'd like to yield, Chairman Kush.
Commissioner Kush, since this was basically your idea, and... Commissioner Kusch, since this was basically your idea and, you know, have the backing, if you would, explain it to the commission. That came out of the committee.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Ketron, and thank you for yielding the floor Chairman Harris. This is a, well, I'll read the resolution then I'll take any questions. Whereas due to substantial population growth in Rutherford County in recent years and the increased development in Rutherford County, there is a need in Rutherford County to explore, study, and research options to fund infrastructure improvements and maintenance in Rutherford County other than by property tax. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners to establish a temporary select committee of individuals to explore, study, and research options to fund infrastructure improvements and maintenance in Rutherford County other than by property tax. Be it further resolved, the temporary select committee shall be composed of two members from the Public Works Committee, two members from the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission, one member from the Budget Committee, and one member from the Highway Board, as recommended by those bodies. The chairman of this temporary select committee shall be selected pursuant to the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners' rules and regulations. Be it further resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners desires and requests that the director of the Rutherford County Planning Department and a member of the Industrial Development Board attend the meetings of the temporary select committee as they are willing and able. Be it finally resolved, the temporary select committee shall report its findings or recommendations to the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners at the conclusion of said study, resolved this 15th day of August 2019, Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion. Is there a second? And a second, Commissioner Gurley.
Yeah, I'd like a little bit better definition of infrastructure because I'm not quite sure. Are we just talking about roads? Are we talking about roads, buildings? I once proposed Communications Infrastructure Study Committee. Infrastructures consist, the general term, infrastructure. So, are we talking about roads or?
Yeah. Commissioner Gurley, that's a great question. Infrastructure is a, can be a very broad category. My intention is just for roads and/or storm drainage as it relates to roads. Does that answer your question?
I would like to see some kind of amendment or something or clarification on that, the definition of infrastructure incorporated in this. Don't know exactly what we're studying because as you said, infrastructure itself, the word is a very large and broad term.
Okay.
Talking about what we're doing this weekend.
Okay, all right. Could we make a small adjustment to the resolution?
What I'd recommend, I think I heard out of this here, if you've got a motion pending for that resolution, right?
We have a motion and a second.
Right, so you can amend it now before you vote. So, if Mr. Gurley makes a motion to amend the resolution, be specific on the wording and then if you get a second, you can vote on that, right?
Okay. What do you want to include in infrastructure?
We're going to define the definition of infrastructure as roads and drainage as it relates to roadways.
You could get rid of the word infrastructure and just put that.
I'll make an amendment, motion to amend the motion to define infrastructure as roads and drainage.
Sure.
I would include that as part of roads.
Roads, bridges, and?
Drainage.
Drainage.
Drainage. Need a second.
We need a second. Second by Steve Irwin.
Need a vote.
Thank you. Any more questions?
I have a motion and a second to amend the resolution. You've heard the amendment, discussion on the amendment. Commissioner Allen.
My question was not on the amendment, so I'll wait till we vote on the amendment.
I'm sorry?
My question was not on the amendment, it was on the resolution, so I'll wait till we vote on the amendment.
Okay.
You can vote on the amendment now.
Questions? Mr. Gammann, on the amendment.
I just need some clarification when we're talking about roads and drainage. Comparing those together, we've talked about some issues I've got out in my district and I think Mr. Rather does also, not sure other people do, but with a large amount of rain, there's been quite a bit of flooding and I'm just wondering how that would play in, you know, and how we're deciding or defining this. Is that, is that part of that included that usually has to do with ditches that are associated with it?
Commissioner Irwin, this is a, it's part of the discussion. It's not, it's not necessarily focused on flooding, but here's my main drive. And as we accomplish the main goal, then some of these other chips may fall into play. Here's the reason for the formation of the select committee, if you'll bear with me for a minute. Director Demossi, Chairman of Planning, Jeff Phillips, we are getting ready to undertake a new long-range transportation plan. And for those of you who've been commissioners for quite some time, you have heard the argument for many years about the need for ways to pay for infrastructure other than a property tax. And we have been hamstrung for years, if not decades, by the development tax cap that the Powers Act has put on. And for as many years as I've been on the Planning Commission and for the five years I've been a commissioner now, we have been kind of like Bella the dog in training that we ask why we can't do things and we're hit on the nose with the paper that says the state won't allow us to do that because that's the state law. So, we've been told no for years and years and years. Well, I've come to the conclusion with my antique blond hair that I'm tired of getting told no. So, and I'm tired of our legislators in downtown Nashville not helping us. So, there's got to be, there's a will, there's got to be a way. I'm trying to put a committee together of like-minded folks that will explore options other than a property tax where as we are continuing the growth boom, that developers might pay part of that bill. I mentioned in steering when I brought this up, everything has a capacity. Our water has a capacity, our sewers have a capacity, our roads have a capacity. And if you build a large development on a road, you're taking part of that capacity. So, in my opinion, you should have a little skin in the game, right? So, we can't charge anymore for the development tax until the Powers Act changes. So, is there another way to assess or charge for them taking away capacity, putting more cars on the road? Greg Brooks is already under the gun as we've all seen the last few months with these new schools coming into play in the near future. He's gotten, his budget, as we have all seen in the last budget meeting, his budget is totally maintenance, no new roads. So, I ask myself, we're getting ready to do a long-range transportation plan. That's great. How are we going to pay for it? We're not putting any money aside, are we? No. So, how are we going to pay for it? So, I'm just trying to get some smart people together in a room, pitch some ideas, and do whatever we can legally or close to the edge of being legal until somebody says you can't do that and we're going to sue you. Find a way to pay for roads, improve roads, improve drainage, which will improve. Here's another thing. You talk about your flooding. I'm sorry, I'm getting long-winded, but this is my soapbox and by golly, I'm going to take every second of it. When you build a big subdivision and you put pavement down, you put roofs down, you're taking away the ability for stormwater to infiltrate in the ground. So, you're putting more rain on the streets, you're putting more rain runoff in the rivers, which can create some flooding issues. Well, I'm a proponent of a stormwater fee. That fellow right there is helping me and Mike Hughes talk about perhaps a stormwater fee. So, you put money, you charge, in some counties and cities, it's like $2.50 a household a month goes on your waste and water bill. That $2.50 a month goes into a fund and that fund pays for drainage improvements, which takes care of your flooding. So, there's things out there and Dad Gammann, I'm going to try and put some into play.
Say, you've given a very elegant, educational, smart response. You had me at hello, so.
Well, you have, first you must have me confused with somebody that looks like me, but...
Commissioner Johnson.
Question. How and who would make the selection of this committee?
Well, if it was up to me, I've already got my fellows picked and gals picked, but proper way to do it is go before each of these committees that have put in this resolution and you all put in an application, just like we do at steering, you put in an application and steering picks those, you vote on those folks that want to be on it. And here's the thing, if you don't make the cut, you're invited anyway. It's going to be a roundtable, impromptu, informal thing, and this is a temporary committee. Once we get the world's problem solved, we're going to disband, move on to something else. Okay? Any other questions?
My question was about design makeup too, so I don't know if you want to talk about that or you want to vote on the amendment first.
Okay. Any other questions on the amendment to the resolution? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, sing five, sing aye. All opposed? Men McCuries, back on the resolution as amended? Now, Commissioner Allen.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. Okay, so I'm reading two from Public Works, two from Planning Commission, one from Budget, one from the Highway Board. That's the committee. And then ad hoc, as they can attend, you've got Planning Director and IDB, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I don't see the road superintendent included in that and I don't see Mike Hughes, County Engineer, included in that. And then I'm also curious, and this may not be part of your vision for this body, but would it be worthwhile for us to include any representatives from the municipalities because our road networks are becoming so intertwined? Would that be wise for us to invite any of those folks and would they be ad hoc or would they be at the table? I don't know if you thought or talked about that. Also, developers, have we thought about having any developers come be part of this conversation or any of the local engineering firms who see this kind of thing all the time? So, I'm just curious, have we cast a wide enough net to get all the voices we want to hear at this table? And that may not be what your vision is, your vision may be more about payment for it, so I may have broadened it too much.
You are a well-educated young lady, Rhonda, and I appreciate the input. Perhaps you would like to be on the board and represent to you. Here's the thing, Superintendent Brooks specifically asked not to be on. He said he would love to attend the meetings and put his input in, but he does not want to take up good air. Mike Hughes and Doug Demossi to me are a team, so when you have one, you have the other. Folks from the city are already on my invitee list to come and be part of the roundtable discussions. There's an old saying, one man's a man, two men's a boy, and three men aren't anything at all. So, if you start bringing in a whole bunch of people, we won't get anything done. You'd just be a bunch of opinions. As far as developers go, bringing those in? No, because all they're going to do is say, "Why are you punishing developers? We can't afford it. You're hurting us." And some other people say, "Well, it's going to be a pass-through. You're just going to pass it on to the home." If we tax a new roof, let's say, if we put X amount of dollars on a new roof, they're going to say, "Well, you're killing me. We're not going to develop anymore." And I think that's a bunch of BS and they'll say it's a pass-through and that's not necessarily true. So, if we get developers in the room, they're just going to say, "You're killing me. We won't develop." And I may say, "Go somewhere else." So, I'm not in the mood and nor I think it's time to get developers involved in the conversation. This is our county. These are our roads. These are our constituents complaining about trying to get across town within a 25-minute timeframe. I'm sick of it, just like you all are too. All right? What was your other part? Local engineers, they will certainly, I lean on them anyway. So, yeah, it's all up here. Trust me. I'm in the government, trust me. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you. More years ago than I'd like to admit, it was back in the early 1990s, this commission undertook a six-month study on alternative taxes and came up with several recommendations that were not adopted simply because of the revenue that they would not generate. They just wouldn't be enough to help, to put even a drop in the bucket. This is set up a little different than that and I think it may have a chance. Would it be possible to put some kind of a timeline on this? I would really like to have the results in and the recommendation in by the time our legislative delegation meets with us in January. Is that too optimistic, Mike?
Commissioner, there was discussion and I shared with the chairman and the rest of the committee that if you're going to do something, put the timeline on it, have it completed no later than the end of December to have it ready to be drafted, to get it to our legislative delegation for the first time the steering committee meets with our legislative delegation and put it in their hands and then be prepared for them to take it back because I believe that they will convene, or excuse me, around the 8th.
On the 8th of January, is that correct? So, we will have a handful of great suggestions ready by the end of the year, but let me tell you, we're not going to stop at just a couple of ideas and we're not going to overwhelm the developers with a whole bunch of things all at once. We will piece this thing out. I mean, there could be a wheel tax increase where a small percentage of it is directed totally towards roads because, I mean, common sense would tell you, who's using the roads? That's where the wheel tax, you know, it makes perfect sense. So, there's going to be a multitude of options. We'll let you all decide what you want to take to Nashville.
This commission unanimously passed a resolution and sent it to the state through our legislative delegation about alternative taxes last year and it being exempted from the Tennessee County Powers Act. That was sent to the black hole where it remains and it probably will not come out of that black hole. Be aware of where this may go.
Well, again, that's the newspaper that we got swatted on the nose with. We ask for help all the time from Nashville and all the time we get a swat on the nose and I'm tired of it. I'm tired of it. We'll seek other arrangements, you know, damned if we do, damned if we don't, so full speed ahead.
Other questions? Commissioner Gammann.
Again, just to verify, is this a paid committee?
If I'm elected chair, my proposal would be that we get paid zero funds.
Commissioner Pearson.
How many times a month are you intent on meeting?
With the fact that we have a deadline looming, I would like to meet at least twice a month, if not more. And these would be perhaps morning's lunch. I don't have an exact time or time of the week yet, but it's going to have to be where we can meet everybody's schedule and meet at least two or three times a month.
The reason I ask when they put the crunch on you to have something in here by December, you'll have to make very fast decisions and it might not be a good thing to crunch them that tight. You know, we're talking about a serious issue here. Let them run to December. We're not satisfied, maybe let them go a little bit longer.
Yeah, well, right. We have some, I say we, there's three or four of us, including the road superintendent, that have some really good ideas already. Now, whether they're legal or not, we haven't vetted that yet, but those are the first things we're going to talk about as a group. things we're going to talk about as a group, and we'll be able to know pretty quick whether those things will fly. All right? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. There was some discussion about putting a time limit on it, but there was no motion to that effect. If not, then we're going back on the motion as, with the one amended, motion as amended, with no other amendments. Any further discussion? Okay, we're on the board, members.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Okay, members, next, we have the Policies and Procedures for the Historic Properties Tax Abatement Board.
This is for us to establish a properties tax abatement board. If we have any questions, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to suspend the rules and allow Greg Tucker to come up and to let you know exactly what we're doing right here, and if you have any questions, you can address them to him.
Without objection, we'll suspend the rules. We're going into recess to hear from our county historian, Mr. Greg Tucker. And I believe chairman of this committee. Mr. Tucker, you recognize?
Well, we've been, this is our third time around with you. Basically, what we're trying to do is set up, under state and federal law, enabling legislation, a program that would provide a tax incentive for preservation of historic structures which are in private hands. And you have recently approved a board, including representatives from the Realty Architectural Planning Commission, historians and such, that would screen. You should have in front of you, or had an opportunity to review, the details we know up to this point as to what would be required of an applicant, and what would be the standards that we would apply. I have acknowledged that there's quite a bit of a subjective character to the process, and that we will be learning as we go along exactly what's the most effective way to do it. Be glad to take any questions. Remember that we're not trying to award people who've done a good job. We're looking prospectively on things that we can influence in the future. I'm delighted. No questions?
Okay, we'll call on Chairman Harris to come back and read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Whereas, the Historic Properties Tax Abatement Board was previously established by the Rutherford County Commission in an effort to encourage preservation of historic property. And whereas, certain criteria and procedures are required for the Historic Properties Tax Abatement Board to follow. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the document attached herein to is Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein at length, as is set forth verbatim, be and the same as hereby adopted as the rules and regulations of the operation of the Historic Properties Tax Abatement Board, resolved this 15th day, August 2019. Mr. Chairman, I move to the table.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion or questions? We'll be on the board, members.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Okay, I'd like to announce that if anyone is interested in applying for the Infrastructure Committee to get an application, and we will be listening to you in the September 6 meeting in September, it is at 5:30. We normally meet on the first Monday of each month, but since it's holiday, we're going to meet on Wednesday at 5:30, sorry.
Where are the applications? Mayor's office? Yeah, we'll have them in the mayor's office. Members, on Item L, Resolution of Recognition for Central Magnet School, has been deferred until next week at the request of Commissioner Dodd, so they will be back with us next month for the reading of that resolution, recognizing such a great school in the entire country, matter of fact. Let me move, Commissioner Harris, you recognize?
Chairman, I'd like to make a clear indication, I have a statement.
September 4, Wednesday.
Apologize.
Okay. You heard the correction. Is there any other business to come before us, any announcements to come before us? Any pancake breakfast or fundraisers in your community? Mr. Irvin.
I'd like to invite everybody out to Recovery Fest on September 7 at Patterson Park. All the local entities, Cumberland Heights, places like that will be out there, and we just invite you to come out and support the Recovery Fest. We appreciate it.
Awesome. Sounds good. Any other announcements? Mr. Rather.
I always love it when people bring food, so I just wanted to publicly, I don't think any of them are still here, they're probably out trying to sell a house or get a listing, but I just want to publicly thank Little Tennessee Association of Realtors and the folks that spent their time and effort bringing a whole lot of good food out here, especially banana pudding. Anybody that brings banana pudding is good, in my book.
Rick's barbecue was very good tonight.
Yes. And I just wanted to, for my own clarification, these forms get turned in tonight.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, all the, yeah, please bring your forms here, or just leave them on your desk, we'll pick them up, because that will be turned over to the Steering Committee for next month. Does anybody need a form? Does anybody have a form on their, in front of their desk for your committee assignments or requests? Okay. Commissioner Irvin?
I forgot to tell you, the time was 10 to 2 on September 7.
10 o'clock to 2 o'clock. Okay. Other announcements? Any other business? Mr. Kush.
Public Works Service Announcement. For those of you who are considering perhaps to be on the Public Works Committee, let
Thank you, Chairman. Any other discussion? Any other announcements? Seeing none, then the last item on the agenda is for us to move into Executive Session. We will be discussing KW et al. versus Rutherford County et al. I would like to request, thank you, guests, all non-members and guests, please exit our room so we can move into Executive Session with our attorney. This will be attorney-client privileges only, so we will give you a moment to please exit our chamber. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, and I'll call on Speaker Pro Tim Phillips. Entertainer motion.
Assuming we need to summarize the case first, is that correct?
privilege there. We had an executive session over KW versus Gertz. We talked about the status of the case.
Motion?
Yes, sir.
Motion is to authorize Randy Mantooth and Hudson Reed and McCrory to represent Rutherford County at the same hourly rate, and to hire additional outside counsel and John Lakey at $225 per hour in the KW versus Rutherford County case.
Have a motion. Is there a second? And a second? We're spending money, so we'll be on the board.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Second motion, and that's a motion to hire outside counsel to provide opinion on the state of insurance coverage related to the KW Rutherford County case.
We have a motion and a second. We're on the board for the second time.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Okay. End your report, Mr. Christensen. Any other business to come before this body tonight before we adjourn? Seeing none, we'll stand in the chair.